Good evening, everyone. Call the regular meeting of the Bucksport Town Council to order for Thursday, March twenty seventh. As you can see, this meeting is being held in person. It can also be viewed on local cable channel thirteen oh three or on the internet by accessing the town website at bucksportmain.gov, clicking on watch meetings and selecting Town Council. Questions or comments may be submitted during the meeting by emailing slassard@buxportmain.gov or during the meeting by calling three zero seven eight zero three zero. I have three reminders and they're the standard ones. This would be a great time to silence your cellphone or electronic device. If you are going to speak this evening and we welcome public comment, please come to the podium and be sure to state your name and your town of residence. And last but not least, and this is just, we'll do this a couple more meetings, but we do have a new sound system in here. And while you don't have to be at the podium or right here to be heard, which is a good thing for the folks at home, even if you are out in the back of the room and or anywhere in whispering, I've been told that not only can you be heard, but sometimes it impedes hearing the people who are being paid to speak. But no, so just be aware, if you whisper it or say it, it's probably going to be heard. Just a reminder. Roll call. George?
Deputy Mayor Mark Eastman.
Here.
Councilor Jennifer Tarian.
Here.
Councilor Tracy Hare.
Here.
Mayor Paul Bissonnet.
Here.
Councilor Paul Rabs.
Here.
Councilor Ed Rankin.
Here.
Councilor Bishop is excused this evening. We have a presentation of any Town Council recognitions, and we do have one. It's a treasurer certification for Rachel Wilson.
Yes, Rachel's worked hard over the past several years to become certified through that and receive the notification. And we also received a reduction in our crime and theft insurance as a result of her certification. So, thank you, Rachel.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Well done. Next is consider minutes of previous meeting. We had in our packets the minutes from the regular meeting on March the thirteenth. I will assume everyone's had a chance to review those. Most approve?
Second?
Questions? Those in favor? A poll. You? Correspondence, receive and review correspondence. We have just the Orland Police Call on March the sixth. Any questions on that? We do not have any ordinances to consider or introduce this evening. We do have a number of discussion items. The first is, and I have changed wording for myself, an update on the dams.
Thank you. Yes, there's an agenda item tonight that I asked you about at the last meeting, about including, authorizing me to negotiate with Main Water and Bucksport Generation to see about their participation in any potential future ownership of the dam. In addition to that, our attorney is doing a follow-up letter to Bucksport Mill for the information that was not contained in the first information dump that we got on February twenty first. There's a number of items related to agreements referenced in that information, but the agreements themselves are not included. And anyone considering ownership of the dam would perhaps assume responsibility for those agreements that are not deeded but are still legal agreements. So we've asked for all of those and a number of other items that were not included in that. So that letter will be going out. And also Bucksport Mill's process for providing that additional information and for doing consultation with the town. There's been no outreach for meetings or to have meetings with the town. None of that has happened. So we're doing that follow-up letter in anticipation of you approving this. I have set up meetings with Main Water for later in April and Bucksport Generation to talk about this. So if you say no, I'll have to cancel them. But their participation is critical if the town would ever consider this. So that's where the dams are at the moment.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager? Next, landfill update.
I want to say we're in a holding pattern, but we're, April is the deadline for them to complete submission of the final stuff for the closure plan. And that, to the best of my knowledge, has not changed. That, to the best of my knowledge, has not changed. So once that's been received, then there will be a better timeline on how they're going to move forward through processing that application.
Question?
Oh, I have one other, I'm sorry, one other thing. And I think I mentioned this last time. I was contacted by a researcher who was working at Main Maritime. And she's affiliated with a scientist who's was doing a project on testing for PFAS in the Penobscot River. And she visited me a week ago to talk about their findings because she indicated that they had had very high PFAS results in an area in Bucksport. And so I brought up the map, our maps, and I said, is this where you tested? And I pointed to a place in the map and she said, yes. And I said, that's the outfall for the landfill pipe. It's the one right next to Bucksport Generation. The pipe comes out and that's little culvert there. And that's where they tested. And the readings were higher than any other place on the river until you got up to Old Town.
Where was the reading in relation to the state's regulation?
Well, the regulation for as it goes into the river is not solution to pollution is dilution. They were testing near the, at high tide, near where that pipe went as an outfall. And so her question to me was, they didn't know that that's what that was. But it, because the characteristics of the leachate, they had that analyzed. And the characteristics of the leachate were associated with landfills. And so clearly that's what it was, and it was higher. And whether or not, they were initially doing another, the study, the point of the study was something about uptake into phytoplankton or something. But she asked if it would be valuable, what would be valuable to the town? I said, what would be valuable to the town is documentation of this there and that increments out from that to, you know. They said, because we're in the process of a closure plan and this kind of information related to their waste discharge and the requirement that they have pre-treatment or not just settling treatment going out, that there's a treatment of this leachate before it goes out, this would be very valuable. So that's, they're proceeding with that, which I thought was, would be great information for the town to have in, as we participate in this closure plan in terms of asking for treatment of the leachate.
Does she have a sense of when that information, will it be in line with sort of the April deadline?
Well, the April deadline is only for them to have their information. That's not the deadline for them to have done closure. So the prior to construction requiring treatment is one that, and that would be done within that. It's this season that they're doing.
Does a closure plan have to, like, say if we learned after the closure plan came in that something else of consequence needed to be done? Can we, do we have a right as a town to get sort of an amendment to the closure plan or is that okay?
The closure plan, while it's all submitted, it's not done done till it's finished. And, you know, in terms of construction, things change. But if something was determined that was worse than you thought when you were going through it, then they're not going to just leave it that way because we didn't know about it ahead of time.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was.
It would require being addressed. And the EPA standard for PFAS going into rivers and stuff was supposed to change not too long ago. Clearly now it's not going to. That's just not going to happen. But that doesn't mean that Maine can't, it's a delegated authority state. It has to be as strict as, but it can be more if it chooses to. So our request for that, their waste discharge license to be two years and this, I just thought it was very advantageous for us that this work and evaluation was being done now, which would, might help us have some more information to use in our requests for input into this closure.
What was the end goal for the Main Maritime Academy scientists going through all this? Is he doing work for Coast Guard Waterways or something or what's there?
No, it's a she, and she and a scientist whose the testing work and the analysis of the type of PFAS is being done through the University of Rhode Island. I'm not sure what the, but she was quite surprised that I could point right on the river where she tested, which was, she said, how did you know that? I said, that's a landfill out by right there. Anyway. So that is fairly new information, but it encouraged them, told them that the town would support that and be able to utilize that kind of information if they move forward with that.
Questions on any of that? Thank you. Let's see, next is report of the Regulatory Review Committee. Folks, we, the Regulatory Review Committee met earlier and I want to get, the gentleman that was going to be speaking in front of the Regulatory Review Committee wasn't here. It was just a mix-up. And I, while the Regulatory Review basically opted not to recommend what the request is to the council, I don't think this council has any interest in not giving anybody their, the inability to speak on their behalf. So Mr. Slate is here and I have offered him the opportunity to speak toward the request, which was to consider at the old Bucksport Car Wash, right next to, out on forty-six, across from the old Snowman's in Orland and next to Crosby's, for consideration of self-serve car washes and marijuana dispensary. Mr. Slate, you come up to the podium and speak.
My name is Cole Slate. I reside in Hampden. That was very kind to excuse my missing the meeting. I want to apologize to every member of the council. I should have looked on the website. I just made an assumption. So I guess the thrust of what I was going to kind of offer the council for consideration was that across the street, as someone brought, I believe Ms. Lassard offered, what is the old Snowman's Grocery Store will be a medical marijuana shop. I wanted to sort of curtail my proposal to suggest that it only be recreational marijuana. So that third furthest bay from the self-serve car washes would just be enclosed on both ends with a door, and there's parking in the back, and it would be an adult-use cannabis retail shop. Now, the important distinction to make between adult use and medical marijuana is that one is safe and one is probably not, according to the state's own testing. So the state sampled, you are allowed to self-sample from your medical marijuana shop. Give them a sample, they took it for testing. Fifty-five percent of the retailers, medical marijuana retailers in Bangor and Portland could not produce a clean and safe sample of cannabis for the testing agent. So that would probably be the best reason to allow this contract zoning is that you'll have potentially unsafe marijuana in Orland and safe marijuana on the other side of the street in Bucksport. But I did kind of have a chance while I was driving to think about what Councilmember Rankin offered, which is that there are places where Bucksport will allow this kind of activity. And also I took what the town manager, Ms. Lassard, said about it does have an impact on others who have a large part of their life's effort invested in property. And so if we're going to throw out that, like, we can't control what happens in Orland, even though it's closer than, you know, what I'm offering, what I'm proposing to do to the neighbor that's objecting, I guess I probably just would kind of like let this go as a proposal. But I do apologize for the lateness.
Sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just for clarity of the folks at home, and I'm just one person, I do agree with you. I've done some research into medical versus adult use just because somebody brought that to me as a, and I think, I'm not here to politicize anything except to say that I think sometimes people might assume that medical would mean one thing, and it would be interesting for people to do their own research. But in terms of this, as one person on this council, I left the marijuana component out of this entirely. And just for my own, and a lot of people don't know that Snowman's, being across the street from Crosby's, Snowman's, the former Snowman's Grocery is in Orland. Crosby's is in Bucksport. In that part of Route forty-six, the town line runs basically right up the middle of the road. And just to add, for, we've never really, not really, we've never, when a butter has had some type of resistance or opposition, it's not something we've approved. And that, that's kind of the nature of zoning. That's what I, where I came up on it, so. Anyone else have any comments on that? Thank you. Thank you. Services Committee.
Okay, we had two items on the agenda tonight. One was the review of annual appointments and we had a motion to, for the council to approve. You want me to go through the list or does everyone have the list?
We have the list and we have to take action on it here in a little bit, so I won't make you read it again.
Okay, well. Of the reappointment of all those people. The second item we had was switching from Maine Municipal Employees Health Trust to Allegiant Care for the non-union town employees, which is a savings of thirty-nine thousand one fifty-eight twenty-four. And we would recommend the council approve that action.
Good, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next is waterfront cleanup day, which is April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. I believe we have an update on that.
Jacob?
Who are you pointing to?
I was using the finger. See, you are rich.
This is an item, good evening, council. This is an item that Councilor Rankin brought up, I believe, at your last meeting or the meeting before. We have since, I've had a discussion with Deputy Chief Denning and Public Safety Director Gagin in regards to guns and hoses, providing the manpower for lunch that day, which they will do, town will provide the food that goes along with that. But, so we are prepared to start advertising that and I think it will be a good day. So, unless you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Great, awesome. Thank you. Once again, great idea. And we, last item under discussion is playground update. And I believe that, there he is.
This summons is Director of Town.
Thank you. Brief update of what's going on. Back in June twenty-fourth of two thousand and four, the Town Council approved Ian's playground. It was reported at a Town Council meeting on October fourteenth, two thousand and four, that Ian's playground was complete and had seen tremendous use leading up to that meeting back in two thousand and four. The Services Committee and Town Council approved the new Playground Committee on January twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. The Playground Committee's first meeting was held on February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and members include myself, Public Safety Director Gagin, Bill Foster, Councilor Eastman, Councilor Rankin, Emily Fitzgerald, Jen Cavelli, Derek Cole, Crystal Harlan, Hugh, and Gene Powell. Resolve two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-three was approved by the Town Council on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, which states to approve the use of remaining ARPA funds for Ian's playground. My intern and myself will be meeting with the Miles Lane Student Council Superintendent Tripp, Principal Dakin, and Jordan Daly from Aspire to go over a slideshow and presentation to the Student Council on April second of the playgrounds and to get some comment from the kids. Public Development is obviously happening tonight during this council meeting. What we'll be looking for at this meeting is to basically show you what we've done looking for in hopes of coming to the council at April tenth to finalize with a resolve. So that you're aware, there's an anticipation, anticipation of price increases on playgrounds due to a roughly forty percent increase in the cost of steel since December two thousand and twenty-four. The playgrounds I'm about to show you, there are seven different, seven different options that the committee had looked at. So they, a year and a month of due diligence. Installation of playgrounds is roughly thirty percent of the cost. Ramps and railings are twenty-two point five percent of the cost, and the playground equipment in themselves is forty-seven point five percent of the cost that you'll see. If the town chooses to have the playground installed internally, then we assume the liability. We can still get the warranties, but the liability falls on the town. Associated warranties, whether or not we install, the vertical poles and hardware have lifetime warranties. Steel pieces have fifteen-year warranties. The netting has ten-year warranties. Moving pieces, a seven-to-ten-year warranty. And a spring on the seesaw is a three-year warranty. I'm going to bring up some of these for the council, and I'll start with where we started. Playground option number, thank you, George, playground option number one. If you can see, no, that's, I think that's good, George. Yeah, no, that's way too big. If you can see the playgrounds here, you see some bigger holes. It's not as much steel. Those are traditional. It's what we have there now. It's, there's no ADA access ramps on these, but there's a lot of play that comes with them. Now, the equipment's ADA. It's just, it's not accessible. But again, what I want to focus on, what you see in this picture is the different types of play that the kids have and all the extra that comes along with it. This is just a different view of the same one. This is like a little game that the kids could play, sort of like Connect Four. You got your big slides, tunnel sliding swing. This star thing's one of the most popular items that they are selling now. The Brewer and Bangor parks that were just redone both have that now. Again, more, um, more things for all different ages and abilities. Some drums or some audio. Uh, let's see here. So this was option one. Um, as you can see here, this is the rock salt, so the spring on this is the thing that has the three-year warranty, but the seats fifteen-year and whatnot. So thi- this was option number one. Option number two, fairly similar. Instead of the seesaw, a tire swing. Now, the tire swings that are at the playground currently come from one joint and, um, both failed inspections, so they were both removed. Uh, I'll show you what the new ones look like now. Again, similar, um, similar in cost, similar in play, a lot of play to do on these playgrounds. So the swing itself now has two points, so before the kids used to be able to whip around, you can't do that anymore. So it can still swing and go to side, side and frontwards, but it wouldn't be similar to what we had before. Option number three includes all three pieces and a little less play. Um, but you have more options for kids who, uh, may have mobility issues to partake in some of these and you still have here. So again, the first three items had no ramps. Uh, the committee, uh, strongly suggested that we look into getting the ramps. So that brings us to playground option number four. Now you can see it looks a lot more s- steel. So the ramp comes up. Child, uh, in here, in this picture, is sitting in a wheelchair and is able to play with this game right here, another game. Comes up the ramp and has access to a slide. So really, it's, it's a lot of stuff that they can do from the wheelchair and if they're able to get out of the wheelchair and go down the slide, that they're not gonna, it, it's a ramp that leads right to there, is what that is. Um, this one also happens to include all three pieces, but as you can see, there's a lot of missing play due to the additional cost of the ramps. And if you just want to get a closer picture of what it looks like. And those are those three things. So again, the double, so the equipment we have up there right now is not compatible for this, so that, that's coming out. Uh, number five, which isn't one that the committee approved, but I think personally after looking and having these blown up, um, onto some big posters, this one might be the best one. I'll show you the one that was approved and I'll tell you why. There's more play for kids in wheelchair on this one. It's sort of similar to number four. Um, and again, leading to, uh, a double slide versus a single slide this time. Uh, this is a game sort of like Connect Four, but it's called Connect Three. Um, and then there's still, they can't get to any of the other items, just like in four, as you'll see in six and as in, you'll see in seven as well. It, it's, it's meant to go this far. Uh, because the height of the slides and the others would practically be impossible to keep and have very many events there because you're gonna need your one and, what is it, one and twelve slope loop or one and ten slope? One and twelve slope, so, which is what you have here. Um, again, these are the games that, that they can, if, if they were wheelchair-bound or uh, mobility challenge, that they could play when they're on here. And as you can see, mobility doesn't mean just wheelchairs. You've got the walking, um, sticks as well, so, um, they can participate, um, with their friends there. Um, number six, number seven's gonna look a lot like this. The only change was in this right here. So I'll, I'll bring you to, to seven, because it's, like I said, it's the same as six, except the, um, the seesaw over there. So as you can see, we, we had it highlighted in a different color now, so it's, so it's brown. Um, all steel, all steel. Um, you got the one piece of play here versus the three. You do got some drums. And then you've got the double slide right there. Um, what was done into this picture is, of course, the, uh, star is attached. And I'm thinking I might get not attached, but it eliminates this piece right here and it just provides a little bit more play if you look at the other option that the, uh, committee had approved. Now, my intern and I did drive up to Bangor because it is the only one in the region that has the ramps. Um, and it's similar to number five. We walked right up it yesterday, walked through the snow, um, Yukon, there's a tic-tac-toe game with baseball bats and baseballs, because it's right by Mansfield Stadium, so they went with the baseball theme. And, um, there's not much more than the, the audio, the sight and the touch besides the slides. And they have the exact same thing and it's right next to their, uh, skate park as well, so. I guess the big thing that you're wondering is how much is this gonna cost us? Um, so, option one that I showed you, uh, two-hundred-ninety-nine thousand, twenty dollars and ninety cents. Option two, two-hundred-ninety-four thousand, thirty-nine dollars, fifty-eight cents. Option three is two-hundred-ninety-five thousand, eight-hundred-fifty dollars and fifty cents. Option four is two-hundred-ninety-four dollars, eight-hundred-twenty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Option five, uh, two-ninety-seven, nine-eighty-four, sixty-four. Option six was two-ninety-nine, two-ninety-seven, seventy-six. And option seven, the one that the, uh, committee um, had looked at was two-ninety-eight, eight-oh-two, eighty-five.
You're suggesting option five?
Four, four or five, yeah. I, I, I really, I really like, I like five, not just because it's like, I think there's, there's more to do than there is in seven. I could show you, I could show you the blow-up plan so you can see it a little bit better than what we have on the TV. Um, but like I said, we are gonna be bringing this to the Miles Lane kids, um, as well and have some more feedback for the committee. The, the playground committee itself thought, uh, it was extremely important and it passed with a unanimous vote to have a playground, um, that was able to be used by people of all mobility levels.
Uh, please.
I'm sort of more in favor of, like, contracting out the, putting it together because the liability piece, I've just, I'm just curious what liability we're talking, equipment liability or people, like, hurting themselves if we did it wrong liability?
Yeah, so Maine's a no fault, except for if you're the one up with the playgrounds. Uh, according to our person who's done all the playgrounds in the area, has done every playground here, including the new ones over at Miles Lane, is if we build it and it's not anything to do with the manufacturing or the distribution of the equipment, then we are at fault if someone gets injured.
Do, do you think we have capacity to do it?
I've asked and I was told we do not have the capacity. We do have the capacity to remove, but I thought we do not have the capacity to build.
I would certainly encourage that we don't do the build ourselves. That would be my preference.
Ranger prices you rattled off, that's just for the materials? There's no installation?
That's, that includes everything.
That installed?
That's install ramps, railings and equipment.
Okay.
I probably should have showed you that first and then went through the numbers. I wrote this pretty paper if I just wanted to keep reading.
When Rich and I, when Rich showed me all of the, these options, um, the difference between five and seven, five has ramps that all access something that someone of any ability can do. Seven accesses things that wouldn't allow participation once you got there to some things, if you understand what I mean. And so the five, which has more opportunities for play for people of all, and better accessibility to more of those with fewer ramps was when you look at the, on a big scale, but I think the committee had talked about the fact that being able to run around or move around on ramps was play. Run, that, that was, is that not right?
That, that, that's correct. That, that running, um, is, that tag is a form of play.
But, uh, if you were looking to have more things to play with or on, five gave you more and also allowed those with mobility challenges to get to those, to get to more things. If you cut down on the number of ramps that just go everywhere, the places they go allow for better participation. And I mean, that, that's, that was, because Rich just said, what do you think? And that was, my input is that greater access for more people to more things is better than building ramps for, for the sake of some, for tag. Because tag, we can do without a playground, you know, I, not to be.
Right.
Just saying, tag can happen without a playground, but.
And what would be, a lack of, what would be the payment terms on this? Is it due on completion or do we s- spread this out over a couple of years or?
The balance in ARPA for this is a little over two-hundred thousand dollars, so the balance would have to be made up from another source.
Okay. I thought we were just under two-hundred.
Well, that was before I filed the report with ARPA about what we'd actually voted on to have.
Uh, so, other things that we had talked about is, if you remember back to the day, the, the playground itself, the access to it. Because we had the Central Street Mill and Fill, we have some fillings, we can have a ramp made into the playground, move the entrance, have a ramp that goes right into the playground now with that one-to-twelve slope. So those are things we can do with stuff on hand already.
And I think seven, which is, has got a, has got, uh, a distance issue with the length of the playground due to the ramps exceeds.
We measured it out yesterday. It makes it, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable, especially by adding that ramp to enter the playground, because we can get the curving fixed and stop having the washouts by moving it, having it filled in with the Mill and Fill. We're gonna have less issues, no trip hazards, less trip hazards, um, and an accessible way into the playground. Uh, the, number seven, because the star is connected, makes it go eighty-one point, uh, eighty-one point seven feet and we have about eighty-four point two feet to the swing set.
Ooh.
But, but they do, they do put a little bit of buffer in there. They want you to have a buffer. That's with the eighty-one point seven. If we had to measure out, I would say it was probably closer to seventy-five. I think they left a six-foot buffer themselves.
Five, which is?
Uh, five, which is, um, seventy, uh, that was seventy, uh, seventy-four point five.
So it'd be a little less than that?
It, it would be a little less than that because the, the star's not attached. Yeah.
But it has the star, it's just detached.
That, that's right, yeah. So this is number five here. It's, uh, it's detached. There's three items. Accessibility, accessibility, um, you can reach this from the ground. I don't, you probably need to upper, I'm not sure. But accessibility here as well, um, and then the slides to go with it. Like I said, it's simply a recommendation after going over the big plans with the town manager. And I have access to those if you want to see him up close and really see the difference.
What's on the ground?
Play chips.
I'm just wondering about accessibility with the play chips.
Play chips are still, um, accessible. We have to buy, um, required to buy the, the, there's a special one that we go through. Um, they're cleansed and because I know we had talked about a rubber mat and that whole thing and that puts the project way, where it needs to go to the taxpayers. We, we applied for a grant through LWCF. If we were to apply now, the ARPA money would be, if, and if, we'd have to be approved, uh, the ARPA money would be forfeited. Um, so there'd be a loss of a little over two-hundred thousand dollars and then, um, also, um, it would be submitted for this December, so funding would be closer to twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine. And quite honestly, the playground does not have to twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine.
Can a wheelchair get to the set through those chips?
I haven't seen it done. The good thing with adding the ramp with the Mill and Fill surface is we can have that put, so we can change the orientation of this, have you? Have it come this way so that the ramp leads to that ramp.
Okay.
If that makes sense. I mean, it's not gonna fall right on top of it because then, right? But it'll, it'll be right there, which should make it.
Are you legally allowed to put the Mill and Fill paths to the other two ADA accessible pieces of equipment?
I'm gonna ask the code officer to do some research for me. They call that passing the buck, sir.
So at our meeting on the tenth, we will, we'll have a, you'll have
More information.
In a recommendation, okay.
Yes, yes, we'll have some more information and then we'll provide the feedback from the youth as well.
So you're gonna do a playground committee before this, the tenth?
Can. Yeah, uh, we can, we can do another one, uh, to discuss then the number five versus the number seven. Yeah, that would probably make more sense.
Wasn't a request, I'm just asking.
I, I hadn't thought of that, where the committee, yeah, because if, if the council wants to go with the playground committee's uh, request of number seven, I, I can reconvene the playground committee and see how many people we can get towards a meeting. That's not an issue to do that. I can do it after the kids, so that way we have the kids' feedback. And then we have, uh, the big photographs, the, the big posters that Banner City Graphics did for us, um, and see the difference.
I think my biggest question would be accessibility on the ground.
To the structure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the structures are virtually useless if you can't go, you know, can't get someone there.
We'll do a little more research on that as well, just to, to confirm. I know it's ADA, but ADA and accessibility are two different things. Because all the playground equipment is ADA, but if you can't access it, it's not access, accessible, so. Well, it was covered in snow. I walked on the snow to get to it, but it's a good point. Um, I think it's grass. If I remember, it's grass to you get to that ramp and then the rest of the playground, it, I believe is play chips underneath it. Like I said, it was completely, it was covered in snow. I wanted, I wanted to get there before we got to this meeting and unfortunately we got dumped on with snow, so we went up on Tuesday.
So we potentially could do hard ground, lawn, grass to the access points of the two ramps?
Yeah. We can do that, yeah. And then I, I, so you're not asking to each of these, you're just asking to this?
To the two ramps, so you got one over there?
No, there's only one ramp. That's the only ramp right there.
Well, how does this one connect?
This connects from this, um, cargo net.
There's no, that's not a ramp then?
That, that, that's not a ramp. That, that's a slide right there.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I assumed this.
That was, okay, yeah. There, there's one ramp. It's same thing, same thing like Bangor as well, um.
Okay.
It's one single ramp that leads you, like I said, to Bangor, to a single slide with play, sort of like this one here, number five, play, play, play. Wherever the drums ended up as well, um. So, yeah, they, unfortunately, no, a wheelchair cannot access this. Um, depending what the chips could there, but can't get up here. Um, it, coming across, I believe that's a net.
We could, we can talk about this later, just throw this out there. We could do lawn to that ramp and these two items, because this one, I don't know how, I don't know how that would work.
Well, remember, mobility doesn't mean just wheelchair. You've got the, the youth right there in the, in the walking sticks. Hence the reason why you have, um, the smaller holes, so that way those walking sticks or crutches don't get caught in them where they would with regular decking. Those are, um, more steel than regular decking, because the regular decking has the big holes, as you could see in. Number one.
There's also special needs that don't have walking sticks or a wheelchair, but just have difficulty.
Yeah.
They're processing like myself, so.
See how that looks like, um, maybe I can make that a little bigger there. See how it just looks like you can see through the ground? It's, that's, that's decking, which is the, the, um, bigger holes on there. And which is what we have at the current playground now. We have decking.
Rich, if you were to do number five, would it, um, be possible to get that ramp, like, closer to the edge? So it's not in the middle of the, right?
So if you, yeah, so if you flip, yeah, I, I see what you're saying. So if you flip that.
Yeah.
You come out of the parking lot and basically you're really.
You could almost do like a grass path to it.
Hmm, well, we don't have the distance there.
From where?
From the, like the skate park to Elm Street.
No, uh, going across that way, you have, uh, fifty-eight, uh, almost fifty-nine feet.
So it ha-
Uh, it does have to go this way.
So you'd have to move the entrance or grab, well, no, we can grasp to it. Cause there's no way that'll line up.
In this current iteration?
Even if you moved, twisted it a little bit, it still has to stay lengthwise.
Yes, it does. It does still have to stay lengthwise. The other iterations, like, even, even like playground one still had to go lengthwise, just because. See everything right here. I mean, they do still give a buffer for kids to run and fall and. But still, I wouldn't want a chance at it, cause you have, um, fencing to the right, uh, fencing to the left. You have the. Playground sign with the rock wall in the top right-hand corner closest to Gardner Commons, um, and then out back. Closest to the superintendent's office, you have the swing set that runs parallel to the baseball field and skate park, um, which. We really would like not to have to move that. Someone told me it has moved. I guess it used to be parallel to the superintendent's office back in the. So I mean, it's been done, so if we need to, we can, um, and I think with the option number. We, like I said, we did, um, Kevin and Jerry helped and my intern helped measure this all out, so there is room. Even with the three separate, but like I said, you, you gain so much more room without having that attached. So essentially, I believe the way we figured it is, um, this would be where, I believe this is the one that would be where the tire swings. Uh, structure is now, and then this one would, could stay right there and then this one would move in front of it and then your regular swings are right here. The only issue going with this. And it's not an issue, but, uh, if, if we were trying to gain real estate for the skate park. This essentially gets you pretty close to the fence, so you really can't move the fence, cause then you're now moving it into the path of, of, of a tour, of a, a piece of equipment. Which is, if you were doing, uh, one of the ones without the ramps, you can move these a lot closer. Consider redirecting the, um, swings back to the way they used to be, have it parallel to the. Superintendent's office and then you can create more room where the skate park could. Take the L over there. The issue with the skate park is it's, it's not, it, it's where the drainage is. And no matter what you do, because that spot that's asphalt right now where it is. The drainage runs right through there. So even if you try to take the L into the playground, you still have to figure out. How in that sim- in that asphalted spot to move the, um, pipes.
Aren't there a few connector pipes like coming into that system?
Yeah, it, it's a four, it's a four system, so it comes off of Summer Street and comes in at about one o'clock to right in front of the curbing. Um, so that's number two, and then it goes straight. Right now they have the ramp. It goes straight through that ramp. To the other curbing, just to the left of batting cage, so that's number three. And then it goes off till about, uh, ten o'clock towards the superintendent's office and the stairs that go down. Um, I did talk to the guys and they made it seem like that they were involved in, um, at least Jerry, that they were involved in. Moving those pipes at one point. They moved it towards that direction because the water flows down. And see, I guess it used to be up higher, so they moved it down, cause that's the way the water naturally wants to run and that's why it's in its current location.
Yeah, I just don't know if I'm hearing anything that really is, is setting off an alarm bell or necessitating. Changing the layout of what we have there already. Um, if I'm wrong, um, please make sure we. Sure I know that because, yeah, I just. Forgive me, but what, now that we're talking, the conversation about moving sewer lines and swinging that swing set and all of that seems to.
It's storm drains. I'm sorry if I said.
Oh, sorry. That's what I meant too, storm drains. Yep, um, it just seems to be turning this into a much more of a project. Well, that was the skate park discussion, which I think has been shelved until we figure out what's going on with the. Yep, totally. New complex. So if I have a, any other questions, I don't wanna. So at our April tenth meeting, we'll have a recommendation of this is what we wanna go with, this is the cost and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. All right. You have three agenda items this evening. The first is resolve twenty twenty-five dash forty-four, uh, which is approving the request for proposals. For real estate broker agent services for tax acquired property sales. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, the only change made to this was that the town manager, her designee is now the town manager. Or his slash her designee in terms of. It was, it was originally written that there was still a, a her in the, in the mix here and it could be. His or her next, so that's.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion and a second. Questions or comments? Alls in favor, opposed, thank you. Item B, resolve twenty twenty-five dash four forty-five, approving the change in health insurance provider for non-union employees. This was the conversation that came out of the, uh, Services Committee earlier this evening and the Services Committee recommends, uh, approving this change. Seems like a win-win motion to approve. Second. Questions, comments? Alls in favor, opposed, thank you. And, uh, resolve twenty twenty-five dash forty-six, uh, authorizing the town manager to negotiate with Mini Water Company and Bucksport Generation LLC regarding the Silver Lake Dam. Question approved.
Seconds.
Questions or comments? Alls in favor, opposed. Do not need to cancel. All right. Not gonna lie, not, this item isn't my favorite one on the agenda, but here we are. Uh, resignations, appointments, assignments and elections. Uh, under that, we have the resignation of Susan Lassard, Town Manager to the effect of June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I will give the, uh, the town manager an opportunity to speak if she would like.
When we originally extended my contract, um, in twenty-three through the end of. Uh, through December thirty-first of twenty-five instead of through June thirtieth of twenty-four, which is my original contract expiration date. It was because, um, we thought my services would be needed. On a full-time basis through that time period and that isn't the case, um. The, uh. The combination of, um, Rachel's training and ascension to finance and, um. My assistant manager clerk and his work, uh. The need for me is really to assist through contract negotiations, which is the first time for both of them and. Some of the heavy lifting on this year's budget, which is a challenging budget, um. Some tough decisions will need to be made and, and I, I would. Like to be the one representing those decisions. There's, a new manager shouldn't have to assume the. Who cut what issues for this, leading into this, and I'm happy to take that, but, um. At the end of the day, me staying six more months would cost the town. A significant amount of money, not because I'm not worth it, but just because. It's an additional salary for a half a year in a time when we're looking to be as. Close to the bone, you know, we've all listened very closely what the council has had to say about expenses and about. What they wanted to see and it's hard enough to do that without adding that to it, um. As I've told you right along, um, if the council wishes, I will continue to assist the town. Um, on the issues of landfills and dams until those items are done. And I will do that at no cost. I, I, I'm serious. I, I told you I would do that. One, I'm not. You don't need to budget money for me to, to do that. I will, if you want me to, you know, you don't have to, but if you want. Assistance with those things, I will continue to do that, but, um. I've had almost ten years here. August would be ten. I was an interim from August to April, but we're still here. And this is a great community. It has great people. It has great employees. It, it has. The best elected officials I've ever worked with over a ten-year period in that. They're all very different and have been very different from the day I got here in terms of, of. All the way to one side and all the way to the other, but this council has always been characterized. By its ability to talk about hard stuff and have really spirited discussions. And leave the room and do it in a civil way. And if you look around, that's just not the characteristic. Of practically anywhere anymore. But I think that's the key to why Bucksport is successful. I think. The leadership exhibited by selected officials in, in behaving in that manner when it's doing its business is. One of the major reasons that it has been easy to be the manager here. You give clear direction, you support change, you require data, you're. And that's been characteristic for ten years. The, there's nobody left that was here when I got hired. Everybody's off the council, it was, but, um, the town has. The town has done good work. I, I am very proud of what has been accomplished in ten years and I know the next ten are gonna be twice as good as the last. But, um. While I love what I do, I, there are pieces of it I don't love anymore and I, when you don't, you can't do it well. Cause you have to, you have to love it all. You can't like it some days, but you have to love it all. There are pieces I don't love anymore, so. As I told the Elsworth American, I always wondered if I would know when. It, it was time and I know that this is the right time. I still have things that I want to do. I like things in a box, things to balance, things to fix, small, finite things, but. It will never manage another community as an interim or as a full-time. I, I don't have. I don't have what it takes anymore to do that effectively over the broad spectrum. So I thank you all for the opportunity that I've had here and, and the way you've treated me. And the ability to work with some pretty freaking amazing employees. You have great staff. And the next manager will inherit them and their good attitudes and their. Their knowledge of the team and where it's going and what it's doing, so I, I. I think you, I leave you in a better place than I found you. And that's, I, I don't know that I can ask for much more than that, but. June thirtieth will be my last day and I have every confidence that. As you move forward, that you will be in good hands and doing great things, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions for the town manager? We obviously will have more to say about this topic between now and June the thirtieth. Um, so we'll save some of that for, as we get closer to that day. I will say that you may get an invite. Uh, uh, if this is an attempt to get out of doing your Christmas poem, I, I, I'm telling you, I'm telling you right now. Um, that you may, you may have to have one more in you.
Well, that's an apology.
That's right. Yeah, so exactly. So if you can find room in the, in that box for that, that, you may be invited to do just that. But, I, so in term, I certainly wanna thank the town manager. I will say this and we'll have a lot more to say about it as we move forward, especially into June, but. Uh, when the subject was broached with me, I probably reacted the way you would expect us initially to be like, uh, why? Um, I think Susan has done a great job explaining the why, uh, this evening and I've, I think this council has done very, very well to. Uh, trust her guidance, certainly as long as I've been on the council and from what I know about how things went in town before I was on the council and so. Um, I think on a decision like this, I think we probably would be served well to do it, no matter how much we like it or don't. So, um, I will tell you that we are working diligently on making sure that, uh, the person who. Moves into the role of town manager, um, is one that can continue to bring us forward, um. And there will be more to come on that as we head into the year. But, thank you, Sue.
You have to vote to accept it.
I know that. Motion denied. Motion to accept. Second. As we move in second, questions? Alls in favor, opposed, thank you.
Reluctantly.
Uh, next, uh, we also have, uh, the resignation of Don, uh, Donald White from the Zoning Board of Appeals, um. And before we take action on that, I'd like to thank Mr. White for his time on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from Mr. White or? How would the council like to proceed?
What should you do? Accept? Second?
Move in second. Alls in favor, opposed. Thank you, Don. Uh, annual appointments. So we have a list of annual appointments this evening, um, and I'm going to, they have different dates. Uh, so I'm going to try to read them as concisely as possible, um, because the poor councilors, uh, councilors, we, Council Orankin had to do that. I was looking at Michael Ormsby, uh, Council Orankin had to do that in the committee meeting, so we'll try to get right through this. Uh, let's see, uh, Luke Cavelli is nominated for a number of positions, which all expire March the thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. And those positions are building official, code enforcement officer, licensed plumbing inspector, local health officer and street naming and numbering coordinator. Uh, Michael Ormsby is nominated as harbor master, uh, with a term also expiring March the thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Deputy Harbor Master would be Jessica Ormsby, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Tax Assessor is Justin Van Dongen, uh, March the thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Uh, Board of Assessment Review is Joseph Devanzo, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. The Cemetery Committee has four folks, all with an ex- uh, term expiration of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and that's Christopher Johnson, Linda Moore. Steven St. Peter Junior and Lawrence Wall. The Climate Resilience Committee, all with an expiration date of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, is Ralph Chapman, Suzanne DePhillips. Emily Fitzgerald, Peter Fitzgerald, Christopher Johnson, Richard Rotella, Steven St. Peter Junior and Donald White. Uh, the Conservation Committee, all with expirations of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Are Suzanne DePhillips, Emily Fitzgerald and Christopher Johnson. We're almost there, I promise. Parks and Recreation Committee is Emily Fitzgerald, March thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight and. What seems like a long way off. March thirty-first of the year twenty thirty, uh, we have, oh, uh, we have the Planning Board, which is Jay Durost and George Hanson. As well as, uh, the same expiration date, Jamie Bowden on the Zoning Board of Appeals. These are all reappointments. Questions or comments? How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Alls in favor, opposed, thank you. Approval of quit claims, discharges and deeds, we do not have any this evening, uh, but I'm pretty sure we have a town manager report.
Well, you don't have one in writing and this is the second time in ten years that I haven't actually gotten one on paper, but I. It was on the computer. It didn't come off. There's. Um, so, um. Assistant Manager Grant and Finance, uh, Officer. Uh, Wilson and I did negotiations, um, started, uh, contract negotiations, um, this week. Um, for phase one and we have another session scheduled for April seventh. We did police fire and EMS, um, on. This week and we'll be doing the second session with them and a first session with Public Works on the seventh. So. So that is in pro- process. That's taking some time. Um, tax due date is March thirty-first, Monday, is the before to pay the second half of property, property taxes before interest accrues. We've had a lot of people in paying taxes. Spent a lot of time with people as they come in to pay. Um, and then the waterfront cleanup has already been discussed. I had that on the list for, for, um, that, but, but truthfully, um, we've been working very hard on the budget and we had meetings with all of the various departments and, and have gone back and with a scalpel, not a chainsaw, to look at, um, how to retain our services in a, in a positive way, not go backwards, but be as close to the bone as we can in terms of some, some charges, like everybody in your household, are beyond our control. I, I don't price electricity, you know, like, you know, that we're like a household with an exponent of five in terms of the number of things that we have to pay for. So anyway, that, that is consuming a lot of, of time because every potential cut you make, you have to look, trace it all the way to the end to see what it impacts, whether it's revenues or services or those kind of things. So, um, we're, the council, of course, see what the original stuff was, but they will also see what the recommendation is from the work that's been done in trying to get it to a manageable state. So I apologize for not having a written report, but I think I said to someone in the office today that every day this week's been a week.
Any questions for the town manager?
Just a comment, if, if you could just thank the team. That's a lot of work.
It, the, just, back to my, this, this town has exceptional employees who even if it's them getting hard news or being asked to do more with a bit less, uh, understand that this is a team, that everybody's gonna have a little pain, but you know, this, I, I'm inordinately proud of them and extremely thankful, um, for all of them and Rachel and Jacob have done an amazing job in providing information, preparing information, um, doing research, all of that this year in a way that has made this budget as hard as it is the best budget I've ever worked on since I've been here because their efforts have been.
I'd like to say I look forward to seeing it, but I don't.
Well, I, I can tell you that at some point, the three of us will be glad to birth this baby and put it in the arms of whoever's going to decide its fate. Because that's exactly what this, once it's off, it's, what you do with it is yours, but the care and feeding of getting it to you is.
And we have one council member who's way too excited to receive that budget.
Mister Numbers over here, yes. He will have analyzed everything six times from Sunday, which is.
That's good.
It is good. It is good. It's, uh, but it is, um, it can guarantee you that by the time you see it, it will have been. I don't think there's a number that hasn't been looked at fifteen times in that budget already. How better can we build this mill strat? Seriously.
Yeah. A lot of work. Awesome.
Any other question? Thank you, Sue. Uh, let's see. Uh, set public hearings in or hold public hearings in approval of any licenses or permits. We don't have any. Uh, discussions of items not on the agenda for the council or public. I will start with the public this evening. Mr. St. Peter.
Hello, how are you doing, folks?
Great.
Uh, well, funny story. I got an email last month from Lee Borseth, um, Vehicle Association, nominated me, and I won the award for EV champion of two thousand twenty-four. I will be getting the award, I think, in April or May, and it's a national, it's a national recognition. They, uh, have also asked me to write an article promoting Bucksport and the EV charters, and so that should be, there's about, I think they said about twelve thousand members on their association, so, and I'm now a part of that association, so anytime, anytime that I can promote Bucksport and put us on the map, um, I'm excited. When I get that award, I'll bring it here and I'll show everybody. I'm excited, so. Have a good one, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, what else? Mister Rotella.
Something other than a playground.
All right.
Uh, so McLeod's Restaurant, unfortunately, uh, after forty-five years, this is the last weekend. All the reservations are already made, so if you get to see George and Connor, definitely wish them the best. They've been amazing for the community with everything they did. The, uh, the ice storm of ninety-eight, I didn't live here, but I understood what they did, what they'd done and meant for this community, so I personally like to thank George and Connor. Um, on some happier news, the Dairy Port opened Saturday, just in time for the nice big snowstorm we're about to get with the highest tides of the year as well. We're looking at twelve point six to thirteen point two. Pray for no winds.
It's all gonna be good, Rich.
All right.
It's all good.
The wa- cause the waterfront walkway has made out very well. Last year, over a week with ten people on it at forty hours plus. I was telling, uh, Assistant Manager Grant that I think there's about two and a half hours worth of work, and it's around Hoffman's Point and right behind Irving, the same culprits each time, but it's bricks aren't displaced as bad, so that should be good. And good news for the residents, um, Ron Gross will be back on Monday, so we will be opening the waterfront bathroom by the Veterans Memorial, and I just please ask that we remember it's for the entire public and to stop vandalizing it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Anyone else? I will second what you said about McLeod's. I did have a good conversation with, with, I've had conversations with George and Connor, but I got on with George the other night, and, um, seems to be a they seem to be at peace with that, the decision, and so, uh, looking forward to being down there Friday night and, and, and we'll go from there, but, uh, um, and I might have more, it's something I want to talk to you about after the meeting about that too. Um, anything from the council?
I just wanted to make, uh, everyone aware, if you haven't heard about it, there's a community forum that had to be rescheduled. Just gave us more time to advertise it, but it's Wednesday, April thirtieth, and it's called The Elephant in the Room. It's the impacts of social media and screen time on child adolescent mental health. And, um, the person came and presented to teachers, I believe it was the middle and high school during the PD day, uh, a couple of weeks back, and everyone was really impressed with the, the, um, presentation, so they're hoping that there'll be a good turnout from the public. It's, uh, focusing on reflecting on ways to address screen time and social media, both in the classroom and at home, and promoting healthy habits for youth. It is at the, um, Clay Auditorium on, as I said, the thirtieth from five to six, thirtieth of April.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, really briefly, um, I mentioned, um, the council had a goals and, um, priorities meeting several weeks ago now. A little over a month ago now. Um, and we talked about our priorities, and then in that time, um, we have ranked those priorities, um, just for the public awareness. We've ranked those priorities. Um, as you might expect, there are priorities that are right at the top of the list, and if you, if you were somebody who wagered, and you wagered on dams and landfills, you'd be correct. Um, we've kind of classified them in four, in four different categories. We have a list of twenty-six priorities, and I think what the, this council has traditionally done, and the opportunity presents itself, um, this time as well, is the ones on our list that are at the top in terms of how we've ranked those are things that we're not, are not, they're gonna be talked about every meeting, and they're not gonna get forgotten. The challenge for this council, and what I would challenge every council to do, especially if it was a priority that they brought to the table that evening, um, was to make sure that the priorities that we have a little bit lower down the list are things that continue to be talked about, um, cause there are some great priorities there, and we have some that are filed under time sensitive, and again, I feel like those will be the ones that are a high pri- they are high priority, and they won't be forgotten about, but things like infrastructure and capital projects, financial and budget considerations, and we've classified some things under that, as well as community and organizational development. I think those are great classifications. There are great priorities and goals under those. I think the council would agree that, um, that, uh, w- we need to be mindful of everything on that list, no matter that, you know, there are some clear things at the top that are clearly priorities that are at the forefront. Um, I have no problem with that list being put out if, uh, if that is something we want to do.
We'll post it.
Great. Uh, any questions on this? More comments? Okay. All right.
I would add that his list is color-coded.
I really did it.
You did. I was gonna say, no, you didn't. It's color, his, his list is.
His spreadsheet magic.
Did you color-code that, Jason? Just, I can't.
There it is. Jacob.
Jacob, I know his name.
No, but he, um, actually, he did the, the, um, the grouping, though. He came up.
I was gonna say the organization, but he's color-coded.
I just assigned colors to them, so, yeah. But no, I, I think it's, uh, what I tried to do, if we're gonna put it out, I'll explain this. Um, if, we, we asked people to vote, prioritize their top five. Made sure that those top five votes got full ranking, but other people, including myself, had a couple other mentions on there. We made sure those are accounted for too. So that if you look down through this list, even if it was something that one person voted for on this council, I do want it to be something that is documented and that, that we're having conversations about. Um, so, um, nobody mentioned, there is no councillor that mentioned something, um, where this doesn't appear somewhere on the list. Um, whether it was at that evening and none of us voted for it after the fact in terms of it being a higher priority, um, it's reflected as such. Um, but I tried to do as comprehensive a job as possible of making sure that everything is ranked the way the council did it. Without getting too crazy with it. Uh, anything else from the council? Wanna, okay. Uh, let's see. Upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignment, and scheduling of committee meetings. Do we have any committee meetings that we're aware of? I know we, uh,
Play down, or do you not know yet?
No, I'll, I'll schedule, I'll schedule it. I don't have a date yet, but yes, I will.
Our next, um, council meeting is April the tenth?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a, when do, when's our first budget meeting, however?
April the tenth.
April the tenth, thank you.
Six.
Yep.
Ten.
Yep.
Six to five.
At six P M.
Six. Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is, we do have an executive session this evening pursuant to, um, one MRSA, uh, section four oh five six A for a personnel matter. I find it very unlikely that we'll be taking action coming out of that meeting. Um, so, and then after that, we will adjourn. So I'll give everyone a few minutes if, council, if you need to help. Yes, um.
Not me.
Right. We are not including, we will be including, how does that motion need to be made to include?
To include Assistant Manager Grant.
Yep, okay. So, uh, after we make the motion to go into executive session, I'll give everyone a few minutes to get a drink, use the restroom. Everybody can file out, and we'll go, we'll give everybody a couple of minutes. But the chair will entertain a motion on that executive session.
Motion to go into executive session. Second.
All in favor? Opposed. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.